Okay, good evening, everyone. First order of business tonight is a hearing for dangerous building proceedings at 159 Proctor Road. I guess I'll turn it over to Attorney Plant.
Yes, procedurally, perhaps he can fill in how this process will go tonight. So folks know that they'll all have an opportunity to be, to speak to the board.
And for those that do want to speak, you need to come up to the table, please state your name, speak into the mic, certainly appreciate it, thank you.
So again, my name is Ted Plant. What I'd like to do to start is just give the board a very high level review of the proceedings this evening to recommend some procedures for the public hearing. So as the board knows, the dangerous building statutes are essentially a self-help remedy for tax. What these statutes do is they offer tax means to address structures that pose a danger or nuisance to the community for one or more reasons. And in its capacity this evening, this proceeding, the board is going to be functioning in this called quasi judicial capacity. So essentially what you'll be doing is functioning in a role that's in accordance to a court. They'll be hearing testimony, reviewing evidence, and then deciding whether the structure on 159 Proctor Road meets the statutory definition of the dangerous building. So, once the public hearing portion has concluded this evening, I view the board's task during its deliberation will essentially two things. First, let's see what the board needs to do is determine whether the structure they shoot meets the definition of the dangerous building. And does the board have copies of the statute? I have some copies here. That's what's down. The standard test, which we recommend in the statute, which says, which does the building introduce a danger. The municipal officers must find that the building is structurally unsafe, unstable, unsanitary, constitutes a fire hazard, it's unsuitable for improper use of the property, constitutes a hazard to health or safety because of the material, the location, or is otherwise dangerous like a property. And so those are the five different standards. The board does not need to conclude that this structure meets all five of those standards. The board does need to find that it meets one of those five criteria to determine that this decision is effective. Once the board has made that determination, the board then needs to decide what remedial measures need to be taken in order to remedy the condition of the structure, whatever it is that's meeting the dangerous building. In terms of procedure for the public hearing, what I would recommend is that town officials first be given the opportunity to present the evidence or testimony, the testimony to why this structure meets one of these statutory criteria. Then I would recommend that the owners of the property are present, parties of the interest of the property are present, that those persons be given an opportunity to speak and offer any testimony they wish to give to rebuttal the town's assertions or explain the situation. And after that, I think it's a proportion to the members of the public to finish discussing the issue. Of course, this is their proceeding, so I would encourage the board to ask some questions to that citizen. I will, of course, be here for the duration, so if there's questions about us, feel free to like to pick my brain. With that, I will take it over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions from any of the board members? So starting off with that, we'll stop with the town officials to present. I suspect you, either one of you folks have had to present.
Good evening. James Nagel, Coast Force Officer. I first landed on that property probably 15 years ago. I believe the town manager at the time, John Frazier, asked me to go out and see what was happening out there, the conditions.
It's one that works.
Any better?
Yes.
So about 15 years ago, I ended up out there, request of the then-town manager, John Frazier. And I found some pretty unsanitary conditions on the property, some unsafe conditions. I had a conversation with the then-owner, Mr. Fogg. He told me he was going to begin remedial work on the property. I also talked to him about the automobile graveyard and junkyard on the property and suggested that he reach out to DEP, see if there was something they could do to assist him in cleaning up. I believe at that time, I returned to the office, spoke with John, and even suggested that perhaps the town might be interested in bringing a roll-off dumpster, that sort of thing, and if there were any fees associated with it, maybe waiving it if the occupants were, would consider filling it. I really don't know what happened after that. I know that that didn't take place. The owners did not approach John, as my recollection, to clean up. And, you know, the few times I go out there, my capacity of building inspector, plumbing inspector, I never saw much change. There was a little bit of cleanup and kind of petered out. I guess if you fast forward to beginning of this year, I was contacted by a, actually it's November, I'm sorry, November of this year, I was contacted by a Sarah Baird, I believe she's a, with Protective Custody, Health and Human Services. She presented me with the photographs, I think you all have copies of those. She asked what I thought the town might do. We began kicking around some ideas, if we might be able to assist them. At that time, someone had reached out to York County CAP, and a Lee Sullivan emailed both myself and I believe Keith, and was asking what we, if we would go in and put together a list of structural deficiencies. And collectively, we decided that probably wasn't a good idea. Not only is it not our job, but, you know, the place was so unsanitary, staff didn't want to go in. We talked, we had a couple of meetings with the owners, and somewhere around late December, the CAP agency got back to us and said, what do you think of us tearing down the building and perhaps replacing it with a mobile home? And the actual question was, could we subdivide the lot and could we put in a mobile home? The answer was zoning would not allow subdivision of the lot. It's a three-acre zone, that was 2.14 acres, and mobile home would, would work. They could put one in. At that time, I mentioned you might want to at least contemplate the condition of the well and the septic system. Wasn't mandatory, just thought it was a good idea to put that on the table to discuss. Sometime late December, early January, a caseworker, I believe her name was Kiko Torres, had a meeting with us. We laid everything on the table, just about what we've talked about with you folks this evening, and she left, told us she'd get back to us, and all communications say she's heard nothing. Then I guess we move up to the evening, we all met with Leah, and she pushed us into this direction.
Do we have any questions from Mr. Nagel?
When's the last time you were out there, Jim?
Um, I do a visual, probably a week and a half, two weeks ago is the last time I was out there. No, no, no change, really. I didn't go in the building, I just do a drive-by.
Torres, did she represent, did Torres, did that Kiko?
Uh, Kiko Torres?
Who did she represent?
Um, she was with the CAP, I believe she's with the CAP agency. She might be a caseworker for CAP agency.
Anybody else from the board have any questions? Okay. Anybody else from the town would like to speak?
Good evening. So.
Chief, please state your, state your name.
Fire chief, Jerry Bollier. So we've been dealing with this since beginning of the year, since it was brought to our attention in regards to DHS being in the building, taking the pictures and stuff. And in talking with the town manager, he asked for our, what we thought as far as the fire department goes, as far as the structure, and looking at the statute and going back and determining that, that the building definitely needs some work. It's definitely a danger, it's hazardous, fire hazard for us. If the building isn't occupied, the fire department will not enter the facility of the building due to the hazard. It's unsafe for us to enter. It's not, you know, we'll, we'll risk, what the saying we have is, we risk a lot to save a lot, but unfortunately, we're not going to risk a lot to put ourselves in this danger, knowing where the hazards are. So you know, we do have to, you guys have the statute to follow, and we'll follow that with you guys, but as far as the fire department stands, it's a no entry for us, for this building, due to the condition of the building. Any questions?
Anybody got any questions for the chief?
Have you been in the building, all through the building?
I have not been through the whole building.
Have you been through the building at all?
Been in the entryway.
And how long ago was that?
A year ago, January, February, that's, that's when we.
Anybody else from the department been in there?
Nope. I went with Officer Woodcock.
Anybody else got any comments, questions?
Jerry, so you only went as far as the doorway?
Yeah, it was just, it was just too unsanitary, very hazardous, that wasn't, just take a quick look.
And that was it?
Yeah.
You just felt it was too
Yeah.
unsanely, unsanitary, as opposed to going further?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And by determining the inside, you know, drywall was falling off the walls and the ceiling, you got a lot of exposed areas where if there was a fire, it would be a death trap for anybody, for any of us to go in.
Okay. Any other questions, folks?
Is the electricity still on to this building? Is there power to the building?
I have no idea.
I have no knowledge of the, the owners are getting tired, so perhaps when you ask those questions, you have to answer those.
Like the Mr. Nagel, I've been doing drive-bys to see the, see if there's been any changes last two weeks, been about two weeks since the last one died, and there was no changes.
Very good. Thank you, chief.
Did you have some?
Um, so at this point, I'd like to ask if either owners or anybody of interest would like to come up and make comments or rebuttals, certainly welcome to step up to the table.
You folks, you know the owners of your town, and you plan on saying anything to us in reference to this, or at this particular juncture?
Do we have any members from the public that would like to make comments? Please state your name.
I live across the street at 156. I understand the building, but I want to know, what about the land? Because we have rats constantly coming over to our house. And, I mean, I've sat on my couch, and I've seen the rats on their porch, they walk by them like they're pets, pretty much. I have three small children living with me, and, you know, these rats just running around, they're in my bird feeder, I can't put out bird feeders. I've watched them take garbage out of their house and just dump it out back. I pay to get rid of my garbage, think everybody on our road pays, but these guys could, you know, just throw it back there. They're not bad people. They have never given us really any problems. Grace and her husband never have. I kind of like to hear that you guys were trying to put like a trailer or something for them, because I would not want to see them homeless, but something needs to be done cleaning up, you know, and the house is falling apart. We've been there 26 years? Nothing's ever been done to the property, to the house, or anything else. But I don't feel I should pay to have it cleaned, because I heard somebody say the town put a dumpster out for them. They didn't put a dumpster out for me, why are we going to put one out for them? I, I guess I just really want to understand where we stand as a community, to be able to, once this is all getting cleaned up, how do we protect our properties from all the animals and the rats and everything that's going to fly out as you guys are tearing down houses or whatever you're going to do? That's my statement.
Thank you. I mean, at this point, I certainly don't have an answer for that, but it's certainly something worthy of discussion that we will have to, we will have to address.
We've slowly, like I said, we've lived there 26 years, and we've slowly watched this happen, and it is a big problem. You know, not just to us, but I feel that for the people that live right behind them, for the people beside them, it's like, and when we're watching people just eat out of their car, throw their garbage out the window of their car, and then that's blowing into my yard, you know, that's kind of not only, you know, sad, but it's a disgrace to us, you know? So I just wanted to understand, when you come to this, how are you going to let us know how to protect ourselves from all these animals coming to us? And when, when will we hear what you decide? Because I'm sure this isn't going to be a tonight decision.
Um, this, it may be, once we get done this, there's a couple of questions that I have to ask our council.
Because like I said, they're not bad people. You know, I haven't talked to them much, but I've talked to Grace, and she does try hard for what she has. I have to say that.
Thank you. Certainly will take that in consideration. Anybody else have any other comments?
I'm Bill Tracy, I live at 200 Proctor Road, Rundlemains. I've been living there since 1997. Kenny owned it? Well, they used to call them Archie Bunker. They owned the house years ago, moved across the street, one thing went to another, then Kenny ended up buying it through his daughter Diane Sandborn, remember? Anyway, in the last seven or eight years, I used to go in that house.
He what?
I used to go in that house all the time. If I remember, it was six, six and a half years ago, I went Kenny in the cellar for the bulkhead. The bathroom floor fell down about five inches, it's got rotted members in it, they all stand up in that house. When we got outside, the house actually shifted one inch one way. And there is no leach field and no septic in that house when Kenny was there. They dug a trench out behind one of the junkyard sheds, it still exists today, the water and everything was pumped out through there, the other one went to the other way. He dumped more oil in that land. I've called DEP over the years, you know, everybody got coronavirus issues. They even called everybody, State Department, fire marshal, they can't do it, always an excuse, coronavirus. There's a such thing as staying the distance, right? They still won't come down. I called them all the time. Oh, send somebody, send somebody, that's three years in a row. I gave up. You know, they are nice people, but my theory, I don't know how they live like that, but the house should be torn down, the structure of that house is junk. That I know for a fact, and there's no septic, full leach field in that property. Steve, they used to live with Kenny, Steve, they wanted to use one of my machines to go do something over there. I let him use it, but they didn't know how to operate it, anyway, he's out there digging holes, dumping cowbell in there. I was pissed, so I left, took the machine and everything to my home. I went by the next day, they were digging 12, 13, half, four feet in the ground for PVC pipe into a 55-gallon drum. I couldn't believe what I was seeing, but it is what it is. The only thing that's pissed me off in the last two years, I lived there all this time, I own houses, I'm in my lane, I got my two big place with a garage. This gentleman right here, he just bought this place on 97 Proctor Road? 93. His dogs on us through. Last year, I got a purebred shepherd, 18 months old. I had a lot of animals in my life. We couldn't figure out what the noise was in my garage. My shepherd had one 10, 12-inch rat. Five minutes after that, she was behind a tire machine getting another one. Then just the other day, we go in the garage, we look, flash on the back wall. I got him though, my dog did. Well, anyway, I think enough is enough, something should be done. I can't even sell my rental properties. Everybody complains about, because when you ride by, look at the neighborhood. There's something going to be done. You know, if I was a millionaire, I'd knock that place down, put the way it's supposed to put my mobile home. I guess I want to stay in what's going on, you know? I think enough is enough.
That's what these proceedings are about, to try to do something down, so.
But, you know, one thing after another.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other comments? That said, I guess I'll close the public hearing.
Just a follow-up to, for Jim. Can you, can you clarify, can you actually confirm that there is no septic and leach on the property?
No, I can't confirm that. Not, not possible.
No record or?
No, there's, there's no record, and, you know, as far as the state of Maine is concerned, a septic system, regardless of what it is, is functioning until it no functions. That's it. So, I mean, could it be a 55-gallon drum out there? Could very well be, but we have no, no knowledge of that, no way to determine.
Okay. I think Mr. Jim, if we make those photos part of the work.
Yeah, I mean, they're in the board's packet. If Jim can introduce them, I think that would be great.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, Jim, do you, do you have copies of the photographs?
I do, I do.
Explain for that letter of those photographs, how they were generated?
Yes, my, my understanding is that, let's see, Sarah Baird asked our sheriff's department to accompany her to the property. It's my understanding that Deputy Sheriff took these photographs.
Deputy Sheriff took these photographs?
Yes, it's my understanding. Sheriff will talk.
And one of these photographs shows a female individual, was that the lady that you were talking about earlier? Cherry?
It's also supervisor Stephanie.
I think the female was the one you were discussing.
Oh, this one?
Yeah, I believe that's the owner.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Recognize it.
And if I have any of those photos, I have to hand this to the record.
Yep. So we have 19 photos that were taken by Sheriff Woodcock during their visit. And yeah. There's a letter that is associated with, with that, that summarizes these photos. From Sarah Baird, from the Maine Department of Health and Human Services. Dated November 8th, 2021. Okay. Any other comments? At this particular point, before we do that, I'll just ask a counsel that really, at this point, we can close a public hearing, and it's not on our agenda, but either we add it to the agenda or we get, there was talked about maybe putting together some notice of facts.
Yeah, yeah, so I think at this point, the board would close the public hearing deliberately first on whether or not, based on the evidence and testimony that you've heard, the structure meets the definition of the dangerous building statute. And, and the, so if the board does find that it meets that statutory definition, the next order is to, what steps need to be taken to the structure, to address the issues.
So if there are no further comments from the, from the public, that said, we will close the public hearing. And we'll call our normal meeting to order. We'll stand up and do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance in the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
We're going to have any more, Mr. Sheriff, just a point order, are we going to have any more discussion with Ben tonight, or in public? Is that your intent? If so, we may want to have that tried and made into the agenda, so we don't waste his time and our money.
Right. I, I was, I was going to ask that, any discussion based on this would be the very next item of discussion.
Okay.
Very good.
Yeah, so.
I would certainly like to see that added onto the agenda.
Yep. Okay, so we're going to add discussion of dangerous, dangerous building proceedings. Do that right after, right after this. I'd also like to add, under committee and board reports, RSU 21, August 15th. August fifteenth meeting, an update on that. And then under business, uh, town website update. Anybody else have anything else to add?
If time warrants it, while we have Jim, can we have a discussion on Vinegar Hill? Would you rather save that for another night?
For, for us personally?
Yeah.
It's a move that, that subject is moving quite rapidly with requiring other issues that are popping up. And I prefer to have it in another meeting. It's actually, I know we have everything together, so we can provide a report to you.
Things are moving now, right? Think, things are moving.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, entertain a motion to, um, approve the agenda as amended. By Velma, seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay, first item on the agenda is dangerous building proceedings. Comments from the board?
The photos that we got earlier are obviously the same as these photos, right? Nothing's changed. In our package is the black and white photo, so it's hard to tell. So that's, these are the same photos we received maybe two months ago or three months ago.
That is correct.
Anything that doesn't sense that? No.
Do we?
We don't know because we didn't hear from the owners tonight whether or not they had made any efforts to clean inside of the building to provide some sort of information to you to indicate that there may be efforts to get that done. So we don't know for sure.
Would it be possible at least to get answers from the owners maybe as, in regards to electricity or, you know, a concern, my first concern would be like the pets that I see in some of these pictures. Have they been removed from the building or? That's something you care to comment on? So, I mean, not unfortunately, but we, as a board, have to base it on what we were presented tonight as well as the pictures, so. To me, I, I don't see how we can't deem this unsafe. Just e- even if we base it solely on the discussion with the fire chief, I, especially being part of the department, I would hope that you would keep me outside of this building. And I, I personally think that, I know we had a comment from the public tonight about financially, who's finance a responsibility to clean this up, but I also feel with the complaints that we heard tonight, that it's the responsibility of this board maybe to throw some funds that way to at least alleviate the rat problem and. I mean, I, I don't. I, I can understand the argument, well, why are we paying to clean this up? But I, I'll make the same argument that if we don't clean it up, who's gonna clean it up? You know, I mean.
So it's what happened. Boy, look across the street, Eric Dunn. They're actually over there shooting for a few hours. One right after the other head start. We got two matches, watch it shoot.
Do we know what year this is? The structure itself? Like, is there any fear of? So, I mean, I'm just wondering, like, we're dealing with this at the town hall now. Are we gonna have to get into asbestos abatement, alleged pain or anything if we get backhoes in there to tear this down?
Very good possibility. Let, let base pain for sure. Asbestos.
Yeah, we gotta be better at all. There's probably a few burn every vapor switches in there, that sort of thing.
How do you go in there if you can't? If nobody will go in, unless they have a hazmat sort of.
Yeah, there's ways. I mean, unfortunately, it gets expensive to deal with it that way, but there's ways to do it.
So Jason, will you make a motion?
I, I, yeah, I, I will definitely make a motion to, I guess, first and foremost, deem this building unsafe. If that has to be done in motion form, is that?
Yeah, and, you know, what I recommend is to take the motion to be tailored to, uh, the statute specifically. So, you know, assuming the board does deem the structure to be a dangerous building, the next step is that I will be drafted and order memorializing the board's findings. And so it would be helpful for me to understand within this statutory, um, language, you know, which one of these five standards does the board specifically find the structure? Is it a, is it a fire hazard, is it unsuitable for human hesitation? I would just ask that that, that motion be framed in terms of the statute. And it'd be helpful for me to sort of understand the board's rationale as to why it meets that criteria that I can sort of categorize.
I think my motion then, like definitively, I'll base it on, as far, uh, fire hazard, because we've obviously heard from the fire chief. And I can clearly see that there's stoves without doors on it and, and light fixtures that are hanging by their wires. So, I mean, to me, that constitutes fire hazard. Nineteen hundred? From these pictures, I, I don't, I don't know how any of us can say that it's structurally unsafe, unfortunately. I mean, I hate to just say it's obvious, but I don't think it is obvious out of any of these pictures that I can see, but I think we could make the argument that inadequate maintenance, that's part of the standard.
Hazard to health and safety.
Hazard to health or safety.
Delapitation.
Based on the photographs and the testimony.
So I've got, uh, in the motion will be structurally unsafe, unsanitary constitute.
Yeah, that's just me, but I just can't, I mean, I'm looking for, I'm looking for floors.
Right, and I'm, I'm basing that based on public comment that we've heard. But we can strike that if the board doesn't want to add it. So unsanitary, unsanitary constitutes a fire hazard, is unsuitable for improper or improper for the use of occupancy, constitutes a hazard to health, inadequate maintenance, dilapitation. Our motion was made by Jason. Do I have a second? Seconded by Tom. Any other discussions? All those in favor? And I'm, it's none opposed.
Now, can I, could I also make a motion tonight for to begin the process of cleanup or would you rather wait?
No, I think that's absolutely the next step. And it's not what I would have to say. The board has a lot of discretion to decide what needs to be done with the structure. For instance, it could be, you know, I think initially should be framed in terms of an order that the property owners, you know, take whatever steps are necessary to clean the property. Carry out the act the board defines necessary. By a date certain, in a certain time period. And essentially what the statute allows is if the owners, um, don't comply with that order within the timeline given that this town is free to lower the properties and, um, carry out the board's order. The board has sort of broad discretion in crafting the, the measure that's necessary to address the condition of the structure. So for instance, you know, if the board feels that it should be people coming in cleaning up the property, that's one possibility. If the board feels based on these pictures, that this structure is, is not redevelopable essentially, then it could order that it's torn down. I think you have sort of broadly way, um, subdue way the evidence to decide what the appropriate force that is.
You could also be on this opportunity.
Right.
I mean, I, I do think you could do that. I mean, I would, um, you know, typically how it does in the past is, uh, statute does allow, there's some indication that the owners are ready and able to come in, take whatever steps are necessary to address the condition. That the board could delay its order, but I would think the board's here now and issue the order forever, whatever steps, things are necessary to address these conditions. You know, the timeline to address those conditions could be a couple of months, then it could be thirty, that's, that's up to the board to decide. But to this, we, we, we only have an opportunity, the next step, they have to give us a plan. That is not the board. They failed to do that. Next step would be for us.
At what point does the structural engine need to come in?
You're right here, right now. I don't think anyone's talking. Right. If you can ask a question, you want. It's getting prolonged at the situation. It's right now, where the board, see, they must be on the work. It's not, you look in that front door, it's like right itself. Bad, that's. Those are, oh, okay. Situation that's already prolonged too long. It's bad change running around. Four J to the thing. You guys stick right, sharp. They don't want something out. It's like this. It will bind before, yeah. It's just that they want policy. Almost forget that for all of them, but. Before they came along, again, we thought they're, uh, into the wall.
Well, that's, that's my first fear is, is the age of the building. Yeah, I understand that, but we can't just go in there with excavators and start ripping and tearing because.
Someone pulled the cellar. I pulled the cellar. I know what it is. Even elected, dude, probably should have been changed seven years ago. That's how bad it is. And you can see the photograph, you can see the tendons. I never seen a bomb out tendently at all different ages. They're rocking. Now, back then.
Keith, would it be possible to reach out to the same company that we just used for the town hall for the asbestos abatement and to see if they would be willing to?
To give us, yeah, give us an assessment?
Yeah.
I can reach out to them and see what they have to say, sure.
And Tom, you might be the one to answer this, but are we, something like this, are we still gonna be required to get three estimates for abatement and three? Right now, we're on.
It could be an accurate abatement the way it is right now, if that's the way it is.
Right.
It's gotta be cleaned up. They can't see.
Right, too, right.
And, and I'm, I'm of the opinion that, um, you know, I, I understand your point, Tom, you know, about giving the owners, but this has been going on forever and, and really nothing has ever been done to help, help themselves out. Okay, folks. Okay, folks, let's, let's keep it civil here. Um, you know, uh, from our perspective here, I understand, you know, the, the cancer issue, it hurts, it's, you know, but there are still other things that could have been done, you know, from my perspective. You know, the, those living conditions to me really have, don't have a whole lot to do with, with the cancer. Um, and this has been going on for fifteen years, so. That's our concern. Excuse me? It's, it's been going on as long as you folks have been there, right? So what's, what's the board position? Do you guys want to go?
I guess, I mean, now that the owners have, have broken their silence, would it, would it assist you at all if the town had two thirty-yard dumpsters delivered? And you could begin the process of getting some of the? I asked a question earlier, but I couldn't get a response, so. So, so maybe we combine Tom's idea with a couple of dumpsters. You know, let's put a timeframe on, let's drop some dumpsters and give the owners an opportunity to at least, like, even if it's thirty days, like, please assist us in getting some of this trash out. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so I guess at this point, we'll just, cause we're, everything's going back and forth here.
It's much weight, it's perfect. The limes of the house are all perfect. I haven't taken the yellow off it yet. So I gotta take the yellow off this asbestos.
Yeah, here's, here's what I would ask. Um, you hold on to those pictures and I think what my suggestion would be that, you know, you present, you give us a copy of those pictures so that at least it can be put into the record. That way, at least we have those and, um, excuse me?
You can provide them to me. You can either, uh, if you can email them to me, that'd be great, if you, if you can. If there's some way we can get them onto my computer, then I can print them for the board.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yep.
You said that community action was willing to, to help you with, with some contractors or somebody. So if the town was willing to take in the, the two dumpsters, and community action could get you someone down there, I mean, it's obvious you're gonna need help cleaning up to help you do the cleaning up and get pictures from the inside of the house that don't look like this to show that, that, that you're working on something. Even an electrician to look at the electricity in the house. To even deem the house fire safe.
Cause obviously they, they tried to work with them and they said that they were gonna help them. Then she said this meeting came on and then they canceled it. So maybe there's someone with a little more influence, like someone from the board reaches out to community service and works with you. They're not even looking for the bill if they're losing an offer. I need someone who's a little more knowledge to be able to point them in the right direction.
Well, they have been, the, the, the lands have been in contact with York County Community Action, Kiko Torres, and I'm sure that Kiko's still there and probably could reach out to us if she wants to. Excuse me?
They started ten months ago. And now it's around, it's taken another step with that, just to measure the level of school. Do I come today and ask the way? That's a lot. Thanks for the good school.
Ms. Torres can contact me at any time. Ms. Torres can contact me at any time, right?
Wendy. Get Wendy and, has Wendy been involved at all?
Wendy has.
Yeah, okay. So, you know, I want you folks to understand that even if we do put, um, dumpsters out there, at some point, at some point in time, someone's going to have to go and take a look at that building and make a determination whether that building is structurally safe or not. You know, I mean, we understand that you've got pictures, Mr. Tracy is, you know, giving us some information, but certainly somebody's going to have to go in there and make that determination, and I hope you understand that. I know you think that the building is 100% safe, but we're, we're going to need someone to, to make that determination at some point.
But it's good to share that is the board sort of trending in the direction of perhaps keeping the public hearing open, then you leave this to another day, allowing more record evidence as to the conditions of the structure to come in. Sounds like, um, so Lamb would like to offer some pictures from the interior, perhaps the board feels it doesn't at this moment have enough evidence to, um, reach a decision as to what remedial measures should be taken.
Still like to see those two dumpsters out there tomorrow.
I, I think we have plenty of pitch, evidence and pictures to deem. I mean, we've already deemed this building unsafe.
Yeah. Right, we, even if it's structurally safe, we've deemed this building by everything else that we've seen. We didn't even include that in, in, in our determination, so.
Yeah, I think it, you know, it sounds like you're meaning wanting some additional assistance, what remedial measures are appropriate, um, given what's happened at the entertaining time.
Did they fire a marshal? You know, by the section, tell them, Rob?
I, I don't, I honestly don't think that the fire marshal would go in this building. I, I mean, I think he would take the same approach as the fire chief where. I, I know it does, and I, and I understand that, and. We're, we're not, I, but I, I think we're pushing hard, given the evidence that we've been shown in the pictures. I just, I can't. This town can't allow you to live in that building the way it is.
Folks, please. Billy. Please. Hey, let's, please, let's not, let's not go back and forth, all right? Let's just kind of, one at a time and, and through the chair here, right? So. Yeah.
But like, well, the grass is not fine. Then maybe we have a lawnmower back, and I have a fight there. And maybe you take kids to the toilet and.
So, Mr. Lamb, I hope that you understand the board's position, right? We have plenty of evidence that shows that that is a very unsafe condition. We have plenty of evidence that shows that nothing has really been done to help clean that area up. We have that evidence, it's proven, it's a proven fact, right? We're willing to work with you, but you guys got to do something on your end, right? I think there's been some suggestions here that have been discussed. We might go down those routes, I'm not sure yet, but you've got to understand, the evidence is overwhelming. Um, so, um, it's, it's hard for us to sway from, from what we've seen from evidence. So, again, um, I, I think at this point, yeah, I, I want to close the, the public hearing. I, we need to, this board needs to deliberate and, and kind of make a determination on what it wants to do. So I'll, I'll just ask for one last comment from the public. Anybody has anything else to say? If not, we'll close that and we'll let the board, uh, do some deliberation. So, I, I know, Tom, you had some thoughts, Jason, you did also. Um, let's throw something out there and see what we want to do here.
I'll, I'll go on Tom's kind of idea where, let's have a, let's have a dumpster delivered and let's put a timeline on that dumpster being, whether it's 30 days, you know, because pretty soon we're going to be up against the weather. So this is going to prolong this process if we start getting snow and cold weather and. So, I, I mean, to me, let's, let's have a dumpster and let's make it 30 days, maybe.
Yeah, we're going to load it. Load my head.
That, that's up for the owners to decide. That's up for the owner to decide, and if after 30 days.
And in addition to that 30-day timeline, maybe, maybe present to us with a plan. After we can see a little bit more of the structure and the trash is out of the building. You know, don't, put something down on paper saying, okay, look, we've made an attempt to clean this out. Here's some more pictures to verify that the floor system is sound. We've got an electrician coming in here to, to look at the wiring. You know, the weather gets cold, you're going to have to heat this, and I don't see, I don't even understand how you heat this now, I don't. So we are, we, we definitely are trying to work with you here, I just, I, I think we need to now put a timeline on this whole situation and move this forward. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but. And I don't know if 130-yard dumpster is going to work. I, I, I don't know how big this building is.
Just today, say, okay, we're going to clear all the costs.
Yeah.
So. Get it cleaned up, they can get it cleaned up. I mean, that's my point, so it's like, best thing in the process.
They're gone, folks, they're gone, right? Don't, don't.
How big is this building, roughly? Size of this room, or?
Jim should have it.
So.
Maybe 230, I don't think.
I have it right here.
It's 24 by 32.
Two stories. Right, so, um, you really want to make a motion, Jason?
I'll make that a motion, yep. Um, I'll make a motion that, and again, quantity of dumpsters, I'm just not, I'm unsure of it because I haven't seen the building. But let's start with two, two 30-yard dumpsters, um, delivered with a 30-day timeline for you guys to come back to us. Uh, let's go with the dumpsters delivered. As soon as you see the dumpsters there, or, like, you guys stop by the property every day, or? So when the dumpsters are delivered, you know, let's see, let's see an attempt to clean this building up and make it habitable again. Because right now, we just have to deem this unsafe. I, I, I don't see how we can.
And, and the other, the other piece of this, too, at some point in time, we're going to have to address is the rodent issue, right? So, um, going to have to dress the rats at some point in time, but let's start with at least cleaning it up, see if we can get something cleaned up. We'll give you the opportunity. If no, if nothing, nothing happens, you leave us with no choice and we're not, we're not going to hang around. We're going to get this thing done, take care of, so. Certainly appreciate anything that you guys can do. So we have a motion by Jason?
Yeah, so, so for clarity's sake, it sounds like what the board is considering is, uh, delivering two 30-yard dumpsters for the property. And giving the lambs 30 days with the delivery of those dumpsters to clean the property to the town's satisfaction. Um, and the town's expectation further expectation that there will be some sort of photographic evidence of what's been done in those 30 days. Question is, um, should the lambs fail to comply with that within that 30-day time? What steps is the, the town prepared to take after? Is it coming into cleaning the property? Is it demolishing it?
I guess it all depends on how much cleaning was done. If there's some cleaning that was done and we can get a structural, somebody to go in there and look at structurally, and we might do that. If there isn't any cleaning done, these pictures to me look like this house needs to be demolished. It's just very unsanitary and.
If there's no attempt in cleaning this after the dumpsters are there, we have nothing more to base it on than these pictures. Right? We've already deemed the building unsafe based on these pictures, so. All I'm trying to do is create an opportunity to inspect this building more, but it just can't be done, given the, the condition of the building, so.
All right, so we've got a motion by Jason. While you have a second?
Second.
Second, second by Tom?
Just for, just for clarity's sake, because I do need to, you know, I do need to put this in. I think the board does need to clarify what actually.
I, I, I personally can see myself making a motion 30 days after proceeding with demolition of the building. I don't, whether or not the board agrees with me on that, I, I have no idea, but. I would, I would see that if there's no attempt to clean this building up, and I'm facing my decision 30 days from now on these pictures, I'm going to go ahead and proceed with a motion to begin the process of demolition of it.
Should that be part of the?
Well, like, the difficulty is, um, that the board's order needs to actually be reported in the registry and, and served upon the owners. I think there's a lot of process that's involved, very specific process. Um, I have never done one of these proceedings where essentially, um, what action the board would take should the owners be able to apply would be contingent upon, you know, what happens within, um, 30 days, right? If, if, if you have, you're giving yourself discretion to essentially craft another order down the line. Um, it seems procedurally a little awkward to me. Um, and, you know, furthermore, I think to comply with the statute, it would be that the board needs to come back and, I guess, operate again and report another order. Um, so I think in terms of, sort of, taking this up and, um, creating that, that the board, except for board decide, you know, what actions it's going to take if, if they go.
All right, so I'm in my motion. So 230-yard dumpsters are delivered. The time clock starts ticking when you guys see the dumpsters. Um, if no attempt is made by the homeowners to assist in the cleaning of the structure, then the town will proceed with, uh, the demolition process of the building.
How much has to be done? Constitute an attempt.
Guys are making this way more difficult here.
Those dumpsters need to be full.
I, I mean, to me, the, if, if none of the town officials will enter the building because of its condition, then it's got to at least warrant the town officials being able to enter the building.
I did a drive, I did two drive-bys. I didn't go on the property because I had no permission. I drove by and, and, uh, it didn't look very good to me. The pictures are pretty accurate from what I could see from the road.
I think they need to make a substantial effort to clean it up. Unfortunately. If they can't just, so.
There's, there's some complexity here. It's all I live in, all I get. And, uh, you know, I, I certainly appreciate it. Maybe, um, maybe the town's order essentially be, um, you know, it's that 30 days to clean the property, to deliver at least dumpsters to the town's satisfaction. Um, should the owners make substantial process or substantial progress, excuse me, clean the property to a point where the town feels, um, you know, it's not quite enough, but it's close. Um, then the town can come in and pick up the rest of the work, I suppose. If they haven't made enough progress, they can have good construction, and that works.
If, if I may.
Please.
I think that, um, we've almost, the town has been involved in this for almost a year now. So i- i- and I believe that what Jason is, is indicating is probably a good method to begin, but I think there has to be definitive at the end of it. So the motion would say, provide two dumpsters, there, there needs to be, uh, substantial cleaning. Uh, if not, um, there would be a, a demolition of the building performed by the town. And so you, so you have some, some structure, so the, the lambs know they have to make an effort. Now, if, if they come to me and they fill two dumpsters, then I'm going to come back to you and say, what do you want to do? You want to add two more dumpsters there? Uh, I, I'm not objectionable to trying that. A- as long as we can get progress moving within those 30 days, uh, we need to see substantial progress. If it's not there, then I think the town's, um, the town's actions is quite clear. You, you need to take action, uh, which would be pretty dramatic for the lambs, but I think for public safety, it would be the right thing to do.
Yeah, the house still has to be livable, and right now it is not livable.
So. All right, this is my last attempt, okay? Um, so I'll make a motion. Um, two dumpsters are delivered. 30-day time clock. Um, substantial cleaning has to be done on this residency. For us to accept the fact that you're actually making progress in cleaning this building out. If at the end of 30 days, there's not substantial cleaning done, to the, to the point where inspectors are willing to go in this house and actually tell us that, okay, the electrical is fine, the floor system is fine, the roof doesn't leak, the smoke detectors work. You know, that, that to me deems it moving in the right direction, where inspectors are willing to go in this property and tell us as a board that, look, they've made great strides to make this place habitable and. They need, then now, now they know they need to work on the electrical, now they know they need to do this, they need to do that. Um, but this, you have to understand, this building needs to be empty on the inside for that to happen, so. My hope is in two weeks, you call Keith and say, I need two more dumpsters. But I, at the end of that 30 days, though, I want you guys to be aware that we've deemed this building unsafe. If we don't see substantial progress, then we're going to begin the process to tear this building down. Does that work for you? I mean, does that seem like an acceptable approach here? Yeah. Yeah. And then it's, you know, as a follow-up, if we get the pictures and, wow, you know, place is cleaned out, then we can tell Jim, you know, we need some more inspectors here and we need an electrical inspector, we need plumbing inspector, you know? That stuff can happen. Right now, it just can't happen. And I hope they do. I, I hope they do. Yeah, dumpsters are on their way.
All right, so we've got a motion by Jason. Tom, you still second that motion?
Um, is that definitive enough?
Any further discussion? Further discussion, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
In unanimous.
Okay.
Can I ask for just one housekeeping?
Yes, sir.
So, the, the board meetings by week. So I can have a draft order prepared for the board for its next meeting. Um, review, if there's anything in it that is inconsistent with facts, if you're presenting any of your demonstrations, you know, that written is not gospel, let me know. It's a requirement to change, or like. Um, after that, the order, as I mentioned, needs to be reported, served on the owners of all parties' interest. Um, I just ask that the board make one housekeeping motion to direct the town clerk to, um, attest and report the order possibly served on the owners and parties' interest.
Second. Does that have to be done, uh, so many days prior to or from now? Is that, there's no stipulation as far as?
No.
Okay. So a motion made by Tom, seconded in by Velma. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay. We all set, Mr. Plant?
For the remainder of the meeting, but I think Keith wants to turn the meter off.
You, you can, yeah, you can stay, but don't charge us.
We, we recorded this. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we've got them in color in our patchwork. I mean, we've got them.
Okay. Moving on, next item on the agenda is a public forum. Anybody from the public, if anything?
Yeah.
Jack, public forums. You have something for us at all tonight? All right, next item is approval of the minutes for August eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Motion by Jason to approve.
I didn't see anything in there, so I'll second that.
Seconded by Velma. Any other discussion? Are those in favor? None opposed. All right. Next item is committee and board reports. I'll try to run through this very quickly. I got one from the August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two school board meeting. Just real quickly, on the eighth of August, we had our meetings here. The RSU twenty-one board also had their meeting, and they elected officials. Aaron Neto is the new chair, and Art LeBlanc is the vice chair. So consent agenda items, there's a bunch here of nominations and a few resignations, a bunch of new teachers coming in. So the resignation of Sean Hanson, grade three teacher at SRS, twenty years experience. Retirement of Michelle Roberts, grade one teacher at MLDA, eighteen years experience. Nomination of Miranda Weeks, grade five teacher at SRS, salary of forty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven. Nomination of Lucy Hunt, grade six ELA teacher, MSK, salary of fifty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-two. Nominations of James Wesley Moesman, grade eight ELA teacher, MSK, salary of forty-five thousand five hundred and eighteen. Nomination of Lauren Sagala, grade three teacher, SRS, salary of forty-five thousand five hundred and eighteen. Nomination of Ashley Collette, grade three teacher, SRS, forty-five thousand five hundred and eighteen. Nomination of Kerry Dunnington, STEM teacher at KES, salary of sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven. Nomination of Hannah Grant, grade one teacher at KES, salary of forty-five thousand five hundred and eighteen. Nomination of Max Robinson, special education rise teacher at MSK, salary of forty-five thousand nine dollars. Nomination of Jasmine Menzie, special education DOC life skill teachers at KES, fifty-four thousand three hundred and thirteen. Nomination of Kenneth Spinney, point five assistant principal at SRS. He has a per diem rate of three hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. Nomination of Gail Keith, new principal at MLDA, salary of a hundred and fourteen thousand. Nomination of Aaron Christopher, multi-age, fourth and fifth teacher at KCS, salary of fifty-five thousand and eighty dollars. Nomination of Aaron Johansson, the fourth mathematics teacher at KHS, fifty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine. Nomination of Lauren Bosenko, point six French teacher at the high school, salary of fifty thousand three hundred and twenty-eight, prorated at thirty-three thousand seven hundred and eighteen. Nomination of Todd McKinley, instructional strategist at MSK, KHS, salary of seventy-eight thousand seventy-five dollars. Those all got approved. They had a copy RFP, they discussed a little bit about that. And they accepted a gift from Mr. Owen for antigen test for five thousand eight hundred dollars. Superintendent's report, she gave an update, Dr. Burgess gave an update, COVID update, COVID. He stated no pool testing, the isolation periods and quarantines, you know, have changed per the CDC rules. I mean, it just states that if there is a positive, they need to stay home for five days. Dr. Cooper gave a school start plan. August twenty-fifth is when staff will be there their first day. There will be no remote learning this year, at least at this point. Students from one to nine start on the twenty-eighth, ten to twelve start on the thirtieth, and the pre-K starts on the thirty-first. She also gave an update on the Summer Bruce program. Apparently, that went very well. They had the students that signed up for it. There were seventy K to five students, and they had a seventy-nine percent attendance rate. The actual Portland Press Herald actually did an article on that and talked about how the kids were, you know, really excited about going. It was a pretty good article. They also talked about the extended school year services. Mrs. Martin talked about that, on, you know, the students' needs after the school year. And she had sixty-four students into that, and that was a ninety-two percent attendance rate. Policies, they did first read on board relations with the media, broadcasting, recording of board meetings, time limit of board meetings, new board member orientation, board member development opportunities, board member freedom of access training, and awards presented by boards of school directors. Those all got approved for the first reading. The board chair update. The chair gave an update on Tommy McNamara charitable foundation gift, where they gifted the Athletic Complex seventy-five thousand dollars. And the board chair also talked a little bit about Dr. Cooper's two-year anniversary and all of the things that had happened in the two years and all the work that she has done for the district. And we adjourned at seven twenty-seven PM. We started at six oh two. At seven twenty-seven PM is probably one of the quickest school board meetings I've ever been to. That's an update on the RSU twenty-one board of directors meetings. Okay, moving on to managers' report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, first off, I want to remind you that we have a meeting tomorrow evening at seven o'clock with Mike Stein from Wright Pierce Engineering to review the letter he's provided to you as well as the draft engineering study that provided three options. And hopefully, with that discussion, perhaps some sort of direction in questions that we can ask to the trustees at the meeting with the sewer department, which will be September sixth. So it was seven o'clock, it will be down in the, it'll be in our large conference room.
Be here, okay.
I'll make sure the front door is open, so you guys can just walk down the hallway and come on down. And Mike will be here. I'll give you a brief update of what's happening with the crosswalk on Route One. I reached out to B two H M, BH two M, and asked them to reconsider the initial cost that they provided to us for the traffic engineering on Route One, which they did. They reduced the bill by a thousand four dollars in some sense. I provided that to Mr. Bennett, who's indicated that he will send us a check to cover the cost of the engineering study. In addition to that, one of the other stumbling blocks for us at that crosswalk is the fact that we need to put signalization in. And initially, we had the signalization quote of eighty-two hundred dollars. So I've asked, I provided our engineer Steve Blake an alternative to that, and he's gonna run that up the flagpole with the folks at MDOT to see if the new signalization that I proposed, which is half the cost of what is being put into the original, would be sufficient. If it is, I've already approached the subject with Mr. Bennett that he would be, if that would be amendable to making sure that that gets done and that he pays for it. He's held that in abeyance at this point until I get the final say. I did indicate to him that unless the board changes its mind, that one of the requirements is that the crosswalk will be signalized. And that if that does not occur, then I will be sending notices to revoke the permits that have been issued to the three folks that are down there. So he's been put on notice, so we'll see how that flushes out. I'll keep you folks moving forward down the line, and we'll see if we can get this resolved. I'm hopeful that the new traffic signals may be the thing that gets us done, so.
So the signalize, I mean, I know that we talked about it when we had them, but that really is being forced by the state, right? If we said we don't want to signalize, the state is still gonna come back and tell us it needs to be signalized.
Yes, but there is no requirement by the state to even put the crosswalk in. That's the ironic thing here, is that the crosswalk is being put in because at your meeting, when you approved the food trucks, you said, we want a crosswalk, and we need to, and you guys talked about having it signalized. So, and that's a requirement if it goes in. The only alternative you would have would be to completely remove everything there and then decide what you want to do with the food trucks moving forward. If that's a deal breaker, and until I hear different, it's a deal breaker, we're gonna keep moving forward to make sure that gets signalized as requested by the board.
Did we, I don't recall us saying that it had to be signalized. I know we talked about it, but I don't recall us saying that it had to be signalized. We asked to look into it, but did we make a motion? Did we?
We require the crosswalk.
Right.
So the state's saying, well, if you have a crosswalk, it means we're stuck.
Right, right. If the crosswalk's there, then it has to be done to the state's standard, or the crosswalk gets taken out, and then nothing's there. So, so as we are, I'm gonna keep pushing, and we'll see where we go.
We figure this all out, the season will be over.
That very well could be, but the issue then would become what happens next year when they come back. Unless I hear any objection, that signal, that thing, that plan has to be done as required. Just to give you a status of our office employees, obviously, our past tax collectors now left us. The town clerk is gone. We also had a scare in our land use office. Antartif had come down with COVID and was in the hospital for three days for other issues related to her COVID virus. But she was back in the office today at nine and got some work done, so I think she's on the mend. I have an interview with one of our applicants Wednesday evening at five-thirty here at the office, and I have another one with another applicant on Thursday morning at seven. So I'm trying to accommodate them. They're both employed elsewhere, so trying to accommodate them. They'll come in and speak with us, speak with me at that point. So we didn't get many applicants, so I think we're going to expand that to, as I understand, Indeed is the way to go. So we'll put an advertisement on Indeed and see how many more applicants we get as a result of that. But right now, Diane is holding down the fort in the office. Wendy is up giving her hand with everything but new plate registrations. She's the only one that's actually licensed to provide those at this point. So we're moving along. We've modified, we've modified the hours. We're giving Diane a break from twelve to one, so I shut the doors and we put a notice out. And we've, you know, so people know that we're a little bit shorthanded. We've got a notice on the website. Please be patient with us until we get through this and resolve that. So we're moving forward, and I'll keep you apprised as soon as we have a full staff back online. But we're getting through it, and we'll see where it goes. I was approached by Naoto late last week prior to setting up your agenda and indicated to me, and I think I'd already reported out to this, that he's closing Talmage Solar as a company that will be providing any new solar panels, the solar programs, or products to any customers. He's indicated to me that he would continue to maintain what we have on site. But he did approach me that he has nineteen solar panels. I think it's nineteen, nine, nine solar panels that he purchased as replacements for these panels here in the event that they become defective or get broken or something along those lines. And he's wondering if, in fact, we wish to purchase those from him, so they're exclusively for us. He's indicated to me that the product that is here is pretty unique to us, and whether or not he'll be able to retain those solar cells in the future may be uncertain. So he's given me a price of six thousand dollars to purchase them. I told him I'd take it to the board and see what their pleasure was. I'm not sure what he'd be doing with them if he has them. They belong to him. I think he's gonna store them, so I'm not sure if there's a real push for us to actually purchase them. But I told him I'd bring it forward. That's interesting. I think we probably would store them up to the transfer station. We have a large room up there that we're really not using a lot of now. Well, a portion that had been broken apart in the past that was used by Public Works. They keep signage up there, and they keep other things up there during the wintertime. So that would have been my alternative to locate them.
Many of these panels make up one of our big trackers.
I believe there's ten of them that would make a total tracker.
So we, there are nine that he has.
Right.
For feeling like replacements.
Yeah, so you'd actually essentially almost be able to do one tracker.
Well, I mean, for that price, I think it's a good idea to do that.
Yeah.
Yep.
You need a motion on this?
Can we spend that?
You know where it's coming from?
Yep.
The central main power.
I think I still, I think I'll double-check, but I think there's enough money within the bond to maybe make that payment and wrap that up.
Yeah, still to make sure that we keep the mics.
Yes, I'm well aware of that.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion to purchase those panels. Motion by Velma, seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? Are those in favor?
None opposed.
All right, want me to move right along?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The next thing would be RFPs for the demolition of the Limerick Road property. To this date, I did not receive any demos. And I think the, any estimates or proposals, and I think the reason why was that the Safe Environmental Solutions did not wrap their their work in the building and get approval through a Form D from the state until, I think it was the sixteenth or the seventeenth of the month, and they would do back on the eighteenth. until, I think it was the 16th or the 17th of the month, and they would do back on the 18th. So I think because that the vendors could not get into the building physically and observe what was there, that it may have prevented some of them coming forward with, with estimates. So my plan is to reissue the RFP. I have a couple of the companies that I can send it to, and I will resend it to the eight that I initially had on our list and try to employ them to at least give us a proposal. I think the other issue too is that, unless I'm mistaken, Phil can fill in the blanks, but I think they're all pretty busy right now. And that may be part of the issue why we may have not received a proposal as we anticipated.
Is the asbestos all been taken care of?
All of it's gone. We have photographs, the state has bound down, we have the form, I think it's called a Form D, that it's been given, given a clean bill of health, all the air has been done, so. I went into the building, you can still walk in the building with the exception of the stairs. All the stair treads were removed because they were all loaded. So if you go upstairs, you've got to watch where you step, obviously. There's no treads there, but the flooring, there's still flooring down, so you can get up in review, but I have photographs of it if anybody's interested. Thank you. The next is a series of events that I prefer that hopefully you, you, my recommendations are something that you all will approve, but as you know, our town tax collector is gone. And as a part of that process, not only do we have to appoint a new tax collector, but we have to take, after the tax collector's been appointed, we have to settle, have a settlement agreement that's been filled out by the past tax collector and reissue a commitment to the new tax collector for those outstanding taxes that have been there. So I broke it down into, into four events. Number one, to appoint a tax collector. Number two then would be to settle the, and recommit to the new tax collector, the 2021 outstanding taxes, the 2022 and the personal property taxes that we have. So the first thing that I'd like to do is make a recommendation to appoint Diana Boucher as the tax collector and as given as of this date.
Oh.
Second.
Motion by Jason, seconded by Velma to accept the appointment of Diane Boucher as the interim town clerk.
Now, tax collector.
And non-interim.
No, she'd be the tax collector.
She'd be the tax collector.
She was the interim town clerk, yeah, okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? None opposed. Okay.
The next I have would be a certificate of settlement from Jessica McPherson for the 2021 taxes that total, according to her analysis and, and reviewed of $29,579.10 outstanding. And with that, if you so desire, approve that settlement to recommit that same amount to Diane for collection. I have both documents here that we need your signatures. There's one for the tax collector.
Okay, Jason made a motion for the settlement of taxes. Wait here a second. Seconded by Tom. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, none opposed.
And the next one.
And can we recommit those taxes to Diana?
Oh.
Okay, motion by Jason to recommit those taxes to Diana. Did I hear a second? Seconded by Tom. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Carries unanimously.
Next I have would be to the the 2022 remaining balance of taxes that need to be collected. The analysis indicates that we have outstanding of $104,133.94. I would make a recommendation that, or seek a motion to settle, certificate of settlement be signed by the board for that amount.
Second.
Motion by Velma, seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
And then recommit those taxes to, of a 104, 133.94 to Diane Boucher.
Oh.
Second.
Motion by Jason, seconded by Velma. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Finally, I have.
This one is just the, this is a statement that it comes from Jessica in, in terms of collection of personal property debt that's still outstanding. There are several years here. The total is $6,508.03. So I'd, I'd seek a motion to, to relieve her of those property, personal property debt.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Velma. Any discussion?
Is this different from, did we do something with this exact amount last meeting?
We, we, we waived personal property that we weren't able to collect. This one is just reassigning this to Diane, so she can seek to collect these outstanding taxes.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
And finally, another recommit of those personal property taxes to Diane for collection.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Velma. Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you. I know it's a lot of paperwork and procedurally, it doesn't happen very often for, for us particularly when a tax collector departs, but I appreciate your efforts.
Okay, next item is your municipal tax rate.
Uh, yes. Let me just go over, I provided to you several options that were, were presented to me in reference to setting a new tax rate. What we discovered through her work is that we once again picked up $26,224.75 of new property tax value. With that, it was pretty obvious that we were going to get close to, if not on, to the tax rate that was there last year. So what I did is I instructed the tax, the tax assessor to, to provide me an analysis that would, that would get the tax rate to the same as it was the previous year. So what that took was, it took $102,000 of your fund balance to reduce the, the rate to achieve the 1690 and provide an overlay of 1,726.72. Now, the overlay, as I've always argued, is just there to round out, by statutes, to round out the tax rate. So that's what we accomplished there with that, with that modification. And then from there, what we did is we kept the 102,000 fund balance the same, and then we added additional overlay to those events that if, if you wanted to choose a different rate than what was originally established, we could do it by adjusting the overlay. So that incremented it up, all the way up to a maximum overlay that's required, that could be required by law of $420,998.79. I think it's ridiculous, I've never been in support of it. I've always been somebody who felt that the overlay is there for one purpose, one purpose only, and that's to round it. So my proposal to you, based on what I was presenting and what I'm presenting to you, is to, is to continue to have the rate the same as last year at $16.90. Use $102,000 of our fund balance, you were, you were given the flexibility of using $400,000. Use 102,000 of that and have $1,726.72 in overlay.
What's the certified ratio, anyone for that?
That means that right now, well, Tom, can you answer it?
Certified ratio the state gives you, so you're, you're supposed to be at 100%. But you're not, generally, you're not.
Right.
And once you get to the lower level, it's 70%, I think, and the state's trying to do a rebound.
Right. I, you know, this year may be a good time for, not, not necessarily, I'm not a proponent of revaluation. I'm more of a proponent of doing statistical update. And we may have to hire a company to come in and do that and provide that. And what, essentially what it does is they look at all the values of the homes that are here and then price a new, you know, to get us closer to that 100% valuation. And essentially what you would see here is if that was certified ratio was 100%, Jason, that tax rate would be lower than 1690 because we didn't have to, we already approved the expenditures for the upcoming year, so. If we were at 100%, that, that dollar amount would be more, so, it would be less. So if we do a statistical update, you can bet your bottom dollar that that rate's going to drop. But your value may go up in your house. Essentially, you may end up paying the same. Right.
But the only way the taxes will go down is if we put more fund balance into it than.
Or if you don't spend as much. The, the other thing would be is if you, you know, did away with some of your spending.
So I mean, I know that we had talked about, you know, using up to $400,000 in fund balance, but you know, I, I'm, I'm okay with leaving it just as is because we may run into a few extra items at the next budget.
Well, I, I think it also provides to you, the fund balance is there, and you know, and when you go through your deliberations next year, you may even want to continue the $400,000 being placed in that warrant article to give you that flexibility. So next year, we may be 250 or 300, but you have that flexibility to manage this tax rate and use the people's money that they've already given you for that purpose, so. And then, as you said, Dan, it's there in, in the event that you have an emergency or something that's essentially that we need to purchase, that we can seek special town meeting or annual town meeting approval to spend that money to do that for that purpose.
Is there come a point where we get penalized for having too much money in the fund balance?
I, I'm not sure. I, I don't think so. I, I, I think in an ideal world for the state of Maine, they'd love to see all kinds of money in there. But I don't think that's.
They're just curious.
Yeah, I, I think maybe, I, I, I think there's a number, but I can't give you the number right now.
Water.
Yeah, right, right, yeah. Yeah, and we're, we're, so with this 102,000 out of fund balance, where does that leave us now? Do you have those figures with you in the fund balance?
I, I don't, I'd have to get those for you, but I can provide it at your next meeting.
Okay, so looking for a motion to set the tax rate?
I'll make a motion, we set the tax rate at $16.90 with an overlay of $1,726.72.
Utilizing fund.
Right.
Okay. All right. So I'll make a motion, we use.
$102,000.
Fund balance.
Fund balance, just to assist us in setting the tax rate.
Correct. Okay, motion by Jason, seconded by Tom. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Now we can set the tax rate.
I make a motion, we set the tax rate at $16.90 leaving us an overlay of $1,726.72.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jason, seconded by Velma. Any other discussion?
Not much for inflation. For heroes. I don't know if you said that.
Okay, all those in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
And all those with homestead exemptions, if they file their paperwork, their tax rate next year will, will be the same.
But, for their assessment.
No, that's 65 and older. But isn't that just 65 and older?
Yes.
And, and you have to file.
Yearly.
You have to file yearly, and I think you have to have the homestead exemption now.
You have to have the home extension for 10 years. And you have to file yearly before December 1st. So have a night.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we approve accounts payable and payroll.
Second.
Motion by Jason, seconded by Velma to approve accounts payable and payroll warrants. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay, and real quickly, town website. John has updated the business directory on the town website. I took a look at it, looks pretty good. I think he got all the information from the, the Chamber of Commerce, but it's in alphabetical order, it's by business type, and so anybody that's a part of the Chamber of Commerce is now listed on our website, so.
You know, it's a great resource, I, you know, you never realize it until after, after I looked at it. Because everybody also always looks for some professional to assist them. And, you know, they're all there. I mean, at least the ones that are in good standing with the chamber. At, at least they have somebody to, they can contact to get prices and whatnot.
It was nice to know. When I looked through it, I'm like, oh, oh, jeez, okay, I didn't realize this.
Yeah, that's what I did too.
It, it was nice, so.
Okay, it's nice to see that, it, it, just a comment, tongue in cheek for me, but it's nice to see that Jason and Phil are part of that group.
Hey, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Want to put an addition on your house, huh?
8:48.
Uh, so move.
No second from Phil? Second.
Motion by Jason, seconded by Velma. All those in favor?